In invocation be led by Vice Mayor Rizzi and the pledge will be Councilman Braden Biggs. Briggs, excuse me.
You gotta bring the first guy.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege of being gathered here today to do the city's business on behalf of our constituents. We ask that each of us be guided by you in the decisions that we make that will affect others and not by any personal agenda or ego. We ask to be humble in our disagreements and that we never forget we are here to serve the people of this beautiful community. Father, we ask for your protection for all of our first responders, those serving in our military, and all of their family members. We ask that they may be brought home safely each and every day. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America, a country, a republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
You do that so fast. Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Present.
Councilmember Biggs?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Greml?
Here.
Councilmember Nesser?
Present.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor?
Thank you. As a reminder, all items in the consent agenda will be approved with one motion. If a council member wishes to remove an item for further discussion, the request will be made prior to approving the consent agenda and will be moved to new business. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Greml?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, Your Honor.
Thank you. Words and presentations, I got one here, proclamation. Child Support Awareness Month in August 2021, whereas the City of Apache Junction joins the nation in recognizing August as Child Support Awareness Month and reaffirms its commitment to strengthen Arizona families and well-being of children. And whereas the Department of Economic Security Division of Child Support Services is robustly committed to putting Arizona's children first through strong advocacy for shared parenting responsibilities as parents and children benefit when both parents are engaged with a child at every stage regardless of merit or status. And whereas strengthening individuals and families with an emphasis on physical responsibility promotes the safety and well-being of children, provides stability, improves the lives of children, and provides opportunity for families to be able to enhance their children's future. And whereas Child Support Awareness Month salutes the dignity diligence, or excuse me, working parents who spend time with their children and who make regular child support payments to safeguard their children's future. Now therefore I, Chip Wilson, Mayor, City of Apache Junction, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the month of August 2021 as Child Support Awareness Month. Chief Kelly?
Photo bomb.
Mayor, City Council, this is kind of unusual for me to receive this proclamation, but on behalf of the state and the county that we work diligently with to enforce some of these parents that are way back, way, way back in their payments to take care of their children, I would encourage, if anybody's watching, that in order to get the payment for the children that you brought into the world, we want to make sure that the people realize there are penalties for not taking care of your children. So with the state and the county, I appreciate this and we try to encourage those people that have children out there to take care of them with the financial responsibility that we all should have. So thank you.
Thank you. Regional intergovernment updates.
Your Honor?
Yes.
So I sit on the CAG board and there's an arm of the CAG board called the PRTA, which is the Penile Regional Transportation Authority. I have a few updates between the two meetings. As far as the part of media goes, there are $64 million in escrow account with the latest deposit of $2.1 million, which is frozen. They're waiting on a Supreme Court judgment to release the funds, but it's a positive outlook on that. So what they're doing, they're putting in a financial procedure on how to distribute this funds once the ruling has been made, so the board is looking into the services of an auditor. As well as following the trend that economics suggests and reevaluating the numbers, the county is responsible for retaining an economist, although these are reimbursed funds to the county. And then the governor signed into law $4 million to be available for the north-south corridor, and that's for the Parta. Now for the CAG meeting.
Your Honor, real quick, Robert, would you tell people what Parta is for some that don't?
Oh.
I'm sorry, thank you.
The Penile Regional Transportation Authority.
Thank you.
And the CAG Central Arizona Government. The legislative update is the Senate with 67 votes started to debate the infrastructure package. Now the language in this package for the public is, we're still kind of waiting on that, and once that's released, it'll take 51 votes to pass it. As far as the directors' report, they've entered into multiple projects, and as each one gets off the ground, more information will be available per project. CAG is also part of the SUN Corridor, it's the World Transportation Summit, and that summit will be held on October 13th and 14th, open to elected officials, if anyone's interested, and it will be at Harris in Maricopa. They also retained an audit firm of Henry and Horn that has been approved by the board. The first year is $25,000, mainly because they're kind of backtracking over to, you know, 2019, 2020. And then any year after that is $10,000 a year for this auditor company. The financial report's been approved, the A dot two-year work program has been approved, the transportation improvement program has been approved, and the 2022 CAG budget has been approved. And that is my legislative updates, Your Honor.
Okay, does anyone else have any?
I sit on the board of the Apache Junction Community Development Corporation. We had our board meeting last week. We were able to secure enough donations to order our 300 T-shirts for our next Make a Difference Day at the beginning of October. We're still looking at further cleanup of Silly Mountain Park. The Seroptimus Club has taken on the job of repainting the bricks at the focal point where the paint had not been previously UV-protected, and they're fading, so that we can solidify those as much longer lasting. And we're still available for additional projects if anyone has something in mind, both private residents as well as anything in the community.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I just wanted to highlight the next Penile partnership meeting is going to be on August 20th, and the topic is going to be regarding water. I can't say on water, the mayor likes to make fun of me for that one, so it will be regarding water, and I'm not sure where yet, but it's going to be an interesting conversation for sure.
You want us over here?
The MAG meeting was 15 minutes and it was all voting.
Okay, I have one thing that I just wanted to bring up. If you remember last meeting, I had shown the attempt by the airport up there at Gateway Airport. Old habits hard to die by on that one. But they finally got the upper section of it, which weighs over several hundred tons, and it, they were able to successfully put it in place. And if you notice, the little, say, the top section is sitting right there to the, I'll say, very left of the tower base, that needs to go up next, and that's when they'll finally have the structure on the, I'll say, proceeding up there for the new tower. And they're still hoping to have everything done. The last time they were attempting to do it, unfortunately, the cranes were too close, so therefore they had to move the cranes and get them in position and try it again. So it took over two weeks to do everything. That's it for intergovernment updates. City managers' report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Bryant Powell, City Manager. I just will add a little bit to the CAG and PRTA. One distinction, CAG is all the cities and towns, or an elected official from each of the cities and towns, in Hila and Penile County. PRTA is just Penile County, and that's because of the tax that was passed about five years ago that Councilmember Schroeder talked about, which is starting to grow into significant dollars, and we're waiting that litigation. So just a distinction on who's on that board. At the retreat back in June, we discussed the increasing communication in regards to the boards and commission application process, and I just want, I'm excited to announce, to let everyone know that the boards and commissions' applications are now open. So this is the time to let everyone know in the community, through the month of August, that we want everyone to take a look at that and have an opportunity to participate in their government. The way to do that is through our website, or online portal, we call it. It's, you can go to our website, and then in the search bar, just type in "boards," and then it'll take you right to the link that you can apply. So we just want to let everyone know Al's going to start getting the word out, and we just got that set up this week. Also, last meeting I mentioned that Republic Services was working on solutions for the issues that we're facing regarding our solid waste residential trash service. There have been improvements in the last two weeks, and at the staff level, we remain vigilant and steadfast in making sure they meet the terms of the contract. Tomorrow, as a reminder, at the MultiGen Recreation Center, 5 o'clock, representatives from D.R. Horton and Brookfield Property will be at our recreation center to go over, as an open house, the state land and the master plan community that's coming. And so we just want to make that announcement here tonight. And then lastly, from my report, and then when the police department is done, we'll turn it over to Al for his portion. Tonight I've invited Chief Kelly to give us an update on a very exciting program that has been researched and in which our group is utilizing technology in a way that will help us and our community be safer, as well as our police department. And we are doing all we can to catch up to the other cities and towns in the valley who are utilizing the technology of drones. So Chief Kelly, can I turn it over to you to introduce that?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Mayor, City Council, staff and community members, tonight I'm actually honored to actually unveil this program that we've been working diligently on. This program was brought to my attention through one of my officers, or one of your officers, several months ago, and we went through a few hurdles with some other agencies, and he, he'll actually do most of the talking tonight, so you won't have to listen to me. But before we go into that, we'll also do a little video, which should hopefully answer most of the questions that you might have. I'm sure there'll be a few other ones, but he's done a real good job in regards to partnering up with our neighboring communities to find out what they've been doing, and as a city manager, just we're just trying to stay in the loop and provide another service to our community that I think will bring some more safety, not only to the community, but also will help us in cutting down on some of the major traffic scenes that we normally deal with in regards to recording them, and then in regards to some safety elements that my, our officers face on a regular basis in some high-risk situations. So if I get asked, the Assistant City Manager to hit the magic button that I always miss, and I'll take care of the lights, and the video should answer most questions.
Hey, who is that guy?
It's proud to introduce its latest tool to assist the citizens of Apache Junction. It's the AJPD Drone Program. Apache Junction has beautiful scenery with wide-open desert areas, and we have the Superstition Mountains. Unfortunately, accidents can occur while our citizens and visitors are using the hiking trails or off-road vehicles. And the AJPD Drone will assist officers in search and rescue efforts and can help find people in need much faster than an officer on foot or in a patrol vehicle. Take a look. This is what the view of an officer conducting a search from the ground looks like. So the officer could be within just 50 or 100 feet of a person that he's searching for and not even know it. Now look at the view from the drone. Within just a few minutes of receiving a call of a missing person, we can have a drone up in the air conducting a search over vast amounts of ground. We would need dozens of officers searching an area for several hours to even come close to the amount of territory that the drone can cover within just a few minutes. You may be thinking, do we really even need this drone program? Why can't we just call for a helicopter when someone's lost? Well, it is true that some of the surrounding agencies do have helicopters that may be of use, but we can't depend on them. The police departments that have helicopters are rarely, if ever, in the area when we need them, and we're always at the mercy of their operations and procedures. So if a pilot's agency requests their assistance, or they have to conserve fuel, or they're just not flying at the time that we request them, then we're just out of luck. Another agency's helicopter is not a practical solution to our own needs. With AJPD having its own drone, we can fly whenever an emergency occurs and for as long as we need it to fly. Our drone is a DJI Mavic 2 equipped with advanced thermal capabilities. The thermal capabilities will assist the search and rescue efforts by making it easier to spot someone in low-light situations, or whose clothing might cause them to blend into the topography. Now, our drone also has several attachments, such as a spotlight to help search at night and a speaker, which could let someone know that they've been spotted and that help is on the way.
This is the Apache Junction Police Department. Help is on the way.
The drone program not only can help with search and rescue efforts, but it can also assist with traffic collision investigations. So when a traffic incident occurs in the city, depending on the severity of the traffic incident, the roads and the surrounding area could be closed for several hours while accident reconstructionists measure and document the scene. The AJPD Drone and the accompanying software can assist with completing the traffic investigation much faster, allowing for roadways to open several hours earlier. This will help prevent secondary collisions, and it will get our officers off the road faster for their own safety. Now, the drone can fly up to 400 feet, but our pilots must keep their eyes on the drone at all times. All AJPD drone pilots will have to pass a certified test administered by the FAA. And the AJPD drone pilots will be FAA-certified and will fly under AJPD policy and FAA rules and regulations. The drone is just one more tool that we now have to enhance the safety of our citizens and our first responders.
So that's kind of a real quick snapshot of some of the things that the officers researched along with some of the other partner cities in regards to getting us off the ground. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce Officer Joel Eagleton, and he'll give you some additional information of some things that he's done in a short, brief, little PowerPoint, and hopefully answer any questions you all might have. Joel?
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I'm Officer Eagleton with the Apache Junction Police Department. I'm going to bring up the PowerPoint here real quick. So this is just a little bit more information about the program itself and to answer any questions that were provided in the video. We have a mission statement. USA UAS program is to provide aerial support to police operations in a safe, responsible, transparent manner while on compliance with federal aviation administration regulations. Just a quick overview of drones. Drones could be used in a lot of different areas, marketing for government, for personally used recreational, such as flying around your house or flying in a park. We're obviously using it for law enforcement purposes, which would be under the government's standard. The drone that you see right in front of us, that is the DJI Mavic 2. It's got a thermal camera, as well as a 32-time digital, digital camera on there. Good thing about this one, it has 360 optical sensors on there to help prevent running into anything while it's flying. We are, as the chief said, and I'm sorry, as the city manager said, in a long list of police departments in the area that have a drone. As you can see, these police departments all have one up and running as of right now. We're just kind of getting into the game, and luckily, they've been very responsive and helpful with policies, procedures, the drone itself. They've been more than, more than happy to meet with me and to give me guidance on how to, how to get this going up and running. Some success stories from local police departments, speaking with the Mesa Police Department and the Salt River Police Department, they utilize it in traffic, accidents, SWAT, crime scene documentation. To go a little bit more into traffic collisions, which we mainly use it for, and what I've used it for so far, the drone can, along with two different softwares, 4D and FARO, what they could do is they can document the scene, which we can later take back and on the software programs, utilize that to help with the investigation. What this does is it both opens up the roads, because on an accident where there may be a fatality, the roads can be closed for up to several hours, you know, five or more. This will open back up the roads, and it allows officers to no longer be outside on the road measuring and gathering evidence. We can go back to the police department and do that. So as you can see here, on the left of your screen, that's utilizing the FARO, which we just recently purchased, and on the right, that's kind of what the outcome would look like. Different set, this isn't any kind of evidentiary value for us, but you can see markings and measurements on there. With the programs that we have in place right now, we can actually measure different things on a traffic collision utilizing these programs and the drones. Drones, other than traffic collisions, so drones, since we have such a rural area out here, as you can see from the video, that first initial as it was going horizontal, that's about the size where if an officer was driving around the road and they were looking for a missing person, person in an ATV accident, someone asking for help, that's kind of what they would see. So, excuse me, utilizing the drone, we can see a bigger area in a quicker manner. It's going to help with lost or missing people, and also for emergency situations, if officers were to, you know, serve a search warrant or SWAT operations, this allows to give an overview of that area that officers may not be able to see on the ground. Couple incidences that we've had recently, two in 2020, where there was missing people when the temperatures were well over 100 degrees. Unfortunately, as you can see in one of them, one of the elderly residents that we have here did pass away due to heat-related reasons, and she was found with less than a quarter mile from the residence. So the drone in these types of situations can really help with that. As you can see, the thermal operations, that was actually taken during the day. So those thermals would actually help out during the day as well. You can distinguish a person on the ground waving for help. On the bottom one there, you see that ATV wrecked out in the desert, which we get a lot of, motorbikes, ATVs, people on dirt bikes. If they were to crash and ask for help, they might not know their exact location, and especially if they're not from the area, they might just be looking at the mountain saying, two miles away, west of the mountain or something. So the drone's going to be able to come out and assist, and again, it's a tool, not our only option. We'd have plenty of officers on the ground looking for the person, but this is going to help assist with the search and rescue. Other policies were approved by their chain of command, also approved by city attorney. These policies and procedures also were utilized, or gained assistance from the FAA and other police departments that already have this in place. As you can see, we'll have observers on there, and in addition to the pilot, there will be someone there to visual, observe the area, make sure that the drone is flying safely. And this will not be flown for a routine patrol. The only way this will be drone, I'm sorry, flown is if a commander approves it, and if it meets all the recommendations that are recommended by the FAA. So part of flying under the FAA is either under certificate authorization, or the Part 107 FAA license, which I currently have right now. Part of those requirements are you flying under 400 feet. There's emergency procedures if we lose communication, so there are things in place just in case we're not, can't get radio signal. But these are pretty good. I mean, updated for 2020, it's rare that that would ever happen. And then privacy considerations for each flight. So when we get this thing up and running, the pilots will be selected through an interview panel. There's going to be regular training. They'll only fly under FAA 107 rules and regulations, and they'll all have the requirements for the specific flight missions. So as far as police departments gaining assistance and approval from local communities, the research has shown that as long as police departments are transparent about what they do with the police department, or with the drone, a lot of communities are very forthcoming and helpful with that. Knowing that we are just using this to help with search and rescue, we're here to help the public. This isn't going to be something we're flying around looking for marijuana plants in the backyard or something like that. This is so if somebody gets hurt, we can quickly put this up and get, and get help for them.
Not a spy cam.
No, not a spy cam, no. Anybody have any questions?
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
So do you, when it finds somebody in the desert, does it do it like by coordinates of longitude, latitude, or how does it relay where that spot is?
So that's part of both, as a law enforcement officer knowing the area, and as a pilot knowing where the drone's at, and then yes, on the, on the controller does give you the exact GPS coordinates. So we could find people by that, or we could just find it, if I know where the drone's at and I can see the area. There's attachments such as strobe lights, spotlights, that can help direct the officers to, or EMS to where the person is needed, or where the help's needed.
Very cool, and very much cheaper than a helicopter.
It is much cheaper, yes. We will not spend millions of dollars on this thing.
Will you be attending any, like Fall Festival, the Chambers Fall Festival, and setting up maybe demonstrations there?
So obviously, as an officer, I fly under everything the chief requests, so yes.
I mean, that's a good way to.
We can make that happen.
That's a good way to demonstrate it and educate the public, the community, of what it's being used for, to allay any fears that you're out there spying.
Yes, ma'am. And that is a great thing about doing with our community relations, is events such as high schools, any holiday events, anything like that, we do exactly this. We come out, we show them the drone. A lot of people, when they hear drone, they think it's a predator with Hellfire missiles on that, that we're going to start shooting down, you know, people that run away from us. No, it's exactly like this. We get it because it has a good camera on it and it's safety for the public.
Although I've heard they can drop sandwiches, or donuts.
I don't know about that. I think we'd already have that attachment if we did.
I do have a question, Your Honor, if I may. In the video, the one officer, Harshman, had mentioned that it had to be within four, on the, on the presentation, it said 400 feet height-wise, or whatever for the airplane. But I thought I heard Officer Harshman mention that it has to continue to be with, in your sight, 400 feet. How does that happen in the wilderness? Do they have to drive a vehicle out as far as they can and fly it from there? Or did I misunderstand that?
No, so as far as, that's FAA rules, regulations. So it's saying that as, as a pilot, you're only allowed to fly at 400 feet. And part of, you have to keep it within sight, so if I fly at 400 feet directly from here, I know that's 400 feet above me, so I know where it's at. But as far as flying it out, and once you get out more horizontal, it's easier to see. You know, as a pilot, I try to make sure that I'm not looking into the sun or anything like that, and that's additional to the visual observer, who's also looking around for power lines, any airplanes in the area, anything like that that can, you know, potentially hurt flying. But the 400 feet is just something that's regulated by the FAA. I can tell you from doing training flights and stuff like that, I don't see any necessity for going about 400 feet.
You don't want it out of your sight, I would think.
No.
And you did mention GPS on it, so if it were to get lost, obviously you'd be able to track it, so.
Yes, ma'am. It also has what's called air sense on it, so it regulates any other drones or planes in the area, and it tells you where they're at, their elevation, and what kind of, is it a helicopter, or a Cessna, or something like that.
Really interesting, thank you.
So I have a couple drones myself, and now does this have the technology where it won't, it won't allow me to fly at pretty much a certain distance or a certain height? And in fact, I can push a button and it'll come And in fact, I can push a button and it'll come within 15 feet of me and land on its own. Is this the same type of technology in here where it's user error is kind of off the record there, because you can't go any further than what it allows you to go?
Correct. And with the Omni Directional, in fact, when we went with Corporal Harsman, it doesn't allow you to go within, I think, 10 feet of somebody. It just stops it dead cold. And then as far as the flight to home, the button, exactly same, press the button, it comes right back to you. You can tell it the elevation that you wanted to fly. This has what's called the intelligent battery on it, so it can understand exactly how much percentage of battery has left.
That was my next question.
Yes, so it can tell you, you can see not only percentage, but it tells you how much flight time you have left. And then you can, it will start beeping at you, screaming at you, telling you, you don't have any battery left, you need to get it back home, and which it will automatically do.
And what is the average lifespan of the battery?
On paper, it's 31 minutes. Out in Arizona heat, you're looking at about 25. But we have several batteries, we have four batteries that are constantly charged. So what we can do with it when it lands just like this, simply go up, there's two buttons on the side of this, take the battery out, put the battery in, bring it right back.
I bet it's fun to fly.
It is very fun to fly.
Your Honor.
Anyone else?
Your Honor.
Raven had something first.
Okay. I just want to just overemphasize the fact that this is in no way, shape, or form a code enforcement drone.
No.
This is strictly police department. We're not flying over people's yards, we're not doing anything like that. It's not just making sure everybody's aware.
Yes. So the only way that this would be flown over a house is if there's exigent circumstances, which a police officer would have to go anywhere they need to go, and if there's a search warrant that exists. Also with that, as I said in the video and earlier, the only way that this is going to get flown is with command approval. So they'll know where we're wanting to fly, the reason that we're wanting to fly, and how long we're going to be up there for, and then if they approve it, then we'll fly.
Just curiosity question, you have to keep a log, is that FAA required?
No, so the FAA is only required if somebody goes to the hospital. Obviously, as a law enforcement agency, again, with the transparency, we want to be up in front. So we actually have three different pages of how did the drone operate, where did it go, how long was it up for, and the GPS coordinates of where it was at. And those are all put into the report for the public.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question on, do we have any idea how many officers we think on the force will be trained to use the drone?
So there'll be me, I'll be leading the program, and we're looking to do about six additional. We're looking to put some motors in as well as some patrol officers. That way, we can utilize this 24 hours a day if needed.
Right. Nice.
All right, Dale.
Oh my God, I lost it. That happens. Oh, I know. I know.
No, you can't fly it, if that was your question.
Have you had an opportunity to utilize it yet?
Yes, ma'am. So we've used it on several traffic accidents, which has been great because we've used it both during the day and at night. One of the things about traffic accidents is the area is already blocked off by police presence anyways, so we're not flying over people, homes, or any other traffic. So again, we've been able to use that, and the evidence that we've gathered from the drone has been really helpful.
Cool, lot safer.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Officer, and thank you, Chief Kelly, and thank you for, our group for looking at technology and finding ways to be more effective in our efforts. That concludes my portion. I'd like to turn the rest of my time over to Mr. Bravo for announcement of current events.
This is good to watch to see how they put it away.
Yeah, it's like a souped-up kid's toy.
Got to fold it up just right, and it fits back into the machine and into the box.
Pretty cool. What's that, a transformer?
First note, you'll shoot your eye out, kid.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Wilson, members of the City Council. Al Bravo, Public Information Officer for the City of Apache Junction. Time for announcements for August the 3rd, 2021. We will start off with one of our favorite topics, the Youth Advisory Council's looking for a few good teens. If you're a teenager going into high school this year and are going either into high school in Apache Junction or live in Apache Junction, you are eligible to be part of the Youth Advisory Council. This is, of course, teenagers' chance to have a voice in the community. It also develops leadership skills, and the group, of course, acts as an advisor to the City Council as well as to city boards and commissions. Again, you need to be a resident of the city or going to school in the city. Their next meeting is on Monday, August the 9th, at 5:30. You can contact J.J. Underwood over at Parks, and he will tell you everything about it. You can also, of course, go to the city website, apatchijunctionaz.gov/yc, Youth Advisory Council. All right, the North Heart Park Community Garden is off and running. You can volunteer on Thursday evenings and Saturday mornings at the park, which, of course, is right down the street here on Superstition Boulevard, outside the Horizon Health and Wellness Building. For more information, you can contact Levier Kurtz at info@lavgar.com. That's L-A-V-G-A-R dot com. So did you hear about the big crowd over at Tara Dittles on Sunday night? They have kicked off Country Junction Idol. Competition continues through the month of August and with a finale in September. You must be 18, and there are cash prizes. You can find more information by calling 4-808-778-527. If you're not familiar with Tara Dittles, new restaurant right across the street from Flatiron Park on North Apache Trail. Next, first Friday is this week at 5:30, East Valley Shopping Center, as always, on Phelps and the Apache Trail, music, car show, and a lot, lot more. And maybe if we're lucky, we get some clouds, so it's not too hot, right? Calling all prospectors, Apache Junction High School will be holding an all-class reunion on the third weekend of October, with events planned for Friday and Saturday, October 15th and 16th. Watch for more information on that coming. Horizon Health and Wellness, again, is putting on its mental health first aid training class in August. Please contact Sherri DeBree over at Horizon for more information or to register. That class is a week from today on August the 10th. Don't forget, the Centennial Celebration Committee continues to meet on the second and fourth Wednesdays of each month. That's at 6:00 PM over in the library. Make sure you note that. And we want to acknowledge an Eagle Scout, Eagle Scout Lloyd Stengline Jr. for his project with the Apache Junction Public Library. One of his projects included developing a seed library at our library branch. It launches in September, you're going to hear a lot more about it very, very soon. But Lloyd did come by the library today to meet with Library Director Pam Harrison, who's in the picture, of course, and so we wanted to at least acknowledge him. Like I said, we'll hear a lot more about the seed library. It is unique in Pinal County, so thank you, Lloyd, for his project, and we'll hear a lot more about that very soon. And those are your council announcements for August the 3rd, 2021.
Can we pull one up real quick? I was trying to get snapshots, the Horizon Health and Wellness one. Thank you, appreciate it. Got it, thank you.
How are these flyers posted on the city's website?
Not all of them are, most of them are. The Youth Advisory Council, you can find online, a few of the others you can find online. Certainly, if anybody needs more information about anything you hear here or information about the city, they can always call my office. My number, of course, is 4-804-745080, the Public Information Office here at the city.
Your Honor, that concludes our report.
Okay, thank you. Okay, since we don't have any new business or old business and council direction to staff, do I have a motion for our next meeting?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that an executive session at 6:00 PM for Monday, August 16th, and Tuesday, August 17th, 2021, be held at the City Council Conference Room located at 300 East Superstition Boulevard in Apache Junction, Arizona, and other meetings be scheduled if necessary.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Councilmember Schroder.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi.
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs.
Yes.
Councilmember Greml.
Yes.
Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Call to the public. I would like to remind everyone that call to the public is a courtesy and not required by law. At the time for the, it's a time for the public to express requests, communications, comments, and suggestions. Request to speak forms must have been completed and handed to the city clerk before the end of the city manager's report. All issues shall be presented in a professional manner without personal attacks. Under the open meeting law, the council cannot engage in a discussion on an issue presented but may respond to criticism and may direct staff to follow up with the speaker directly and/or place the matter in a future agenda to council discussion. There's a three-minute time limit for each speaker, and I have two of them. And Jim Palmer?
Your Honor, council members. My question again is coming back, and I've sent you, I've sent you all emails in the past on the same subject, which is republic.
All right, name and address, please.
Jim Palmer, 240 East 13th Avenue, Apache Junction.
Thank you.
And so what happens is, it's very poorly managed, as you know, or you should know, I mean, if you've been looking at the things I've been sending you. And for instance, this last, this last item, on the 16th, on Thursday, the 16th, or Friday, the 16th, we're supposed to put our trash cans out on Thursday night. Trash cans set out there, and this is, this is not just my street, this is the whole neighborhood. Trash cans set out there for Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Monday night, they picked it up as for their Tuesday pickup. So they come in Monday night to pick up, and then they come back Tuesday morning to pick up the trash. It's pure mismanagement. They don't have the resources to handle Apache Junction. And if they didn't know on Thursday night that they didn't pick up the trash, or if they, I mean, the trash can didn't come back, the truck didn't come back, the driver didn't say anything, so Friday they didn't come back, Saturday, Sunday, and then Monday night they come back to pick up Tuesday, that's just poor mismanagement. And I've sent you several emails over the past few months, and this is just ridiculous. They don't have the resources to be able to handle us. So we need to go away from the monopoly, back to the open market.
Thank you. Quentin Heiner?
Mayor, council members. My name's Quentin Heiner, I live at 2002 South Apache Drive in Apache Junction. I sent a letter to all of you last week about carports, being able to, the way it is right now, the setback is there's no way of putting out some kind of a shade or a carport. Your vehicle's out in the sun constantly with all electronics and that, or now in the vehicles, it's, you know, damaging, plus it's hotter than heck when you get in the vehicle without some kind of a shade. I would like you to look into this, if you would, I'd appreciate it, and thank you in advance, and thanks again.
Thank you. Okay, does the council have any requests for staff to follow up? Can we get Mr. Heindler's request as a possible direction to staff in their next council meeting?
Certainly can, we certainly could do a work session to talk about it. I know there's been some interest in that, for sure.
Okay.
Are we allowed to comment? Can we comment or no? Are we allowed to comment?
You could, you could comment, but you cannot then, so what do you think about that, Mr. Schroder? But you can comment as to the criticism, yes.
I just have a statement, I don't think, I don't think any of the comments were necessarily criticism. And this is not to make any excuses, but I will say that across the nation, we have a shortage of employees. It's just a fact, it's a, it's a situation that most businesses and organizations are faced with. They have a lack of staff, and bus drivers, I can tell you, my grandchildren have, we're getting messages from schools where they don't have bus drivers, they're having to contract out for drivers. We don't have enough people willing to work. Not making excuses for any of that, but I'm saying this is, I'm suspecting this is a big part of the problem with the, with the trash. We need to still look into it, though.
Well, we've, we've done some, I'd say some changes that have occurred the past couple of weeks now that will address some of those problems also. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to adjourn the meeting, thank you.